I'd like to call to order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of March 24th, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbett.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
Thank you. The consent agenda. We'll begin with the proclamation of Donate Life, April 14th, 2014. Um, let's see. Mr. Ruda, would you read the proclamation?
Like being in school over here, "Don't pick me, don't pick me." Tiverton Town, uh, Town of Tiverton, Rhode Island, Tiverton Town Council, 343 Highland Main Road. Proclamation Donate Life Month, April 2014. Whereas, one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. And whereas, approximately 28,000 Americans received a life-saving or enhancing organ transplant last year. And whereas, a new patient is added to the national patient waiting list for an organ transplant every 10 minutes. And whereas, more than 118,000 men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantation, of which approximately 4,000 are in New England. And whereas, an average of 18 people died every day last year awaiting an organ transplant that did not come in time. And whereas, the Rhode Island Organ Donor Awareness Coalition is the volunteer-led, nonprofit organization diligent working to create awareness about an increased number of registered organ donors in Rhode Island. And whereas, the Town of Tiverton supports the Rhode Island Organ Donor Awareness Coalition's life-saving mission. And whereas, everyone is a potential organ, tissue, and blood donor. Therefore, we, the town, I'm sorry, we, the Tiverton Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Donate Life Month in Tiverton, Rhode Island, to honor all those who have made the decision to give life, to focus attention on the extreme need for organ donation, and to encourage all Tiverton residents to consider giving life through the organ donation, and to discuss that decision with their families. By order of the Tiverton Town Council, March 24th, 2014.
And I encourage everyone who is not a donor to become one. Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular council meeting, March 10th, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes, March 10th, 2014. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting, February 24th, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes, February 24th, 2014. Receipt of the minutes of the following boards and commissions: Economic Development, II, Wastewater Management Commission, Board of Canvases, Library Board of Trustees, Prevention Coalition, Open Space. Correspondence received and filed. Thank you letter from Samaritans of Rhode Island. Invitations to join the Aquinic Island National Police Parade, May 4th, 2014. Boroughville Town Council Resolutions. Support of S. 2135, H. 7095, and H. 7580, relative to Common Core mandates and standards. Opposing, S. 2411, relating to labor and labor relations arbitration, continuance of contractual provisions. Opposing, H. 7464 and H. 7465, relating to labor and labor relations, continuance of contractual provisions. Supporting, H. 7501 and H. 7502, relating to courts and civil procedures, interests on judgments. Support of H. 7291, amendments to Rhode Island General Law, 16-7-44, school housing project costs. Portsmouth Town Council Resolution, support of S. 2091, to repeal the master lover voting. And Armenian National Committee request for flag to be flown on April 24th. And last, Treasurer Denise Saret, February budget expense and revenue reports. Anything to be removed?
I would just request C.A. 3B be removed.
C.A. 3B.
I have, um, C.A. 3C1.
C1. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the rest of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Pelletier.
Yep. Um, I guess because I am the official parade ambassador of the Tiverton Town Council. We've been invited to march in the 31st Annual Aquinic Island National Police Parade. It's on May 4th, 2014. It starts at 11:50 at the Hampton Inn parking lot on West Main Road in Middletown, and it goes into Washington Square in Newport. Um, I just wanted to bring attention to it. And, um, if anybody is interested in marching, I think it might be a worthwhile event. It's, um, this year's parade is, uh, is being dedicated to Officer Sean Collier, the MIT officer who lost his life during the Boston Marathon bombings, and NETC Police Officer Frank Lima, who is a retired Middletown Police Officer who also lost his life when he was struck by a motor vehicle. And additionally, the 105 officers who lost their lives in the line of duty in 2013. Um, so that's that.
And thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Ruda.
Yes, so 3C1 is a resolution adopted by the Town of Boroughville, and it is basically supporting the delay of the implementation of the Common Core state standards. And, uh, this is something that, uh, I was a former teacher, albeit in Massachusetts, but we had basically the same type of state standards in, uh, in testing, which is actually still in effect in Massachusetts today, and this is starting to actually come into effect in Rhode Island. And I want to, I'm not going to take this time to argue points against it or for it, but, uh, Town of Boroughville supported to delay the implementation of the Common Core state standards and testing requirements for graduation. And, um, in my own, it's feasible if the Tiverton Town Council also like to possibly do a resolution supporting the same type of, of bill.
My only question is, Sally, does the, um, school committee support delaying?
Uh, the school committee voted on a formal resolution to do the same.
To request the delay?
Yes. And I also went to an education roundtable at the State House to speak against it, you know, to delay it as a high-stakes exit test. The kneecap into postpone the Common Core curriculum till we can look at it, till everyone can look at it, the teachers and everyone, to go slowly, put it on pause. I was at a meeting in Massachusetts. We went to see the Commissioner of Education there, because Massachusetts is always first in the country, so we said, "Let's go see what they're doing." And he stood up there and said, "Let me make this perfectly clear. We're going to go slowly with this park and Common Core. We're not going to count it right away, the way they did with the MCAS. I was there, it took 10 years. So we have to make sure that everybody, you know, the curriculum's aligned, the capacity's there with the computers, if the children know how to use them." So we did take that form of resolution in January. Thank you.
And that was my only reservation. I would support it. The school committee also supports it.
Perhaps Sally could have the school committee forward us that resolution. I'll draft up one for the council for approval on the next meeting.
Maybe a couple paragraphs of background information. I'm not particularly well-versed in education policy.
Send us some information about the Common Core. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion regarding C.A. 3C1. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Mr. Tom Ramatowski, Quarry's Groundwater.
Good evening, Tom Ramatowski, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. I realize this is later, this is something that's going to be talked about later on, on the agenda, I think, under the, uh, the legal matters, but, uh, I wanted to bring up one thing that I think we have to really, really consider before we even go there. And that is that these excavations are very large-scale. Uh, they have, in some cases, possibly already broken into our groundwater, and we just don't know what the effects of that is going to be, or could possibly be, on some of our irreplaceable groundwater resources. The document that you'll be asked to do for public hearing later on is a vast improvement over what already existed, we agree, but it doesn't really have the background, because it wasn't written by an experienced hydrogeologist. I don't know if there's anybody even on any of our volunteer boards that would have the background to do that. But it talks about a certain depth to groundwater that you need to avoid reaching, but we really don't know if that's sufficient for our town. That might be too little, too much, and we really would need to get somebody in with the right background around now, so that the time when you do consider this, you have that information in front of you, so you can make an informed decision about how far away we should stay from our groundwater resources. You may know that when they did the analysis of groundwater in town a while back, they didn't find any large sedimentary or sand-like aquifers here. It's all basically fractured bedrock, and we all depend on that. And those cracks can go long distances, so if these people, with their blasting and their work, are into the groundwater, it's like having an open wound on, on your arm or your leg, where, uh, bad things like bacteria and things could get in there and possibly affect people further down the road. And it's not just people with wells, because some of our Stafford Pond fringes has some recharge from groundwater, from springs. So we really don't know what we're doing, except that we're opening up this vital resource to possible damage, infection, whatever you like to call it. So I would urge you to try to find somebody, I know budgets are tight, to hire an experienced hydrogeologist to look at this and make specific recommendations for our town, so, and we can have them before we go to public hearing, discuss them, and vet them, because I'm just really worried that we may be setting ourselves up for some problems here. We also may have things to learn from other towns that have experiences. I know there's a, an attachment in the back where it talks about one town recommending four feet to groundwater, but that may not be sufficient for Tiverton, based on its unique geology and the fractured, uh, rock that we depend on to get our water from. So I guess I'd just leave it with that. We had a long meeting discussion on this at our last meeting, and, uh, my group unanimously directed me to come here and to bring this to your attention. And I think it would be a good thing, so that when we do vote on this, we'll have everything we need, and we can do it once and get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, when this comes up under K. later on, I may ask you to come up with some suggestions. Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Sally Black, Town Council Budget.
Yes, good evening. First I'll speak, if I could, Mr. Rodrick, it's on Mr. Kohog Man. As a member of the Tiverton School Committee, I'd like you all to be introduced to Kohog Man. What happened was Rebecca Elwell, and Nwenda Lawson, and Diane Sandman, myself, went to Newport to a meeting. We tried to get down there and get involved in all different things, and they told us that anyone could enter into a contest to go into the Festival of Lights at Ballard Park. So we said we would submit something, and this is what we submitted. So when I went to Ballard Park to see him, it was a beautiful, all the lights were on, it was a beautiful night, and right next to him, there was a beautiful Eiffel Tower. It was amazing. So all the mothers were saying, "Oh, come on, honey, have your picture with the Eiffel Tower." And the fathers were going, "You kidding me? Look at Kohog Man." So he was a huge hit down at Ballard Park in Newport. And now he's going all around, he'll visit the schools about anti-bullying and anti-drugs, and, uh, he's, he's really, uh, he's got an agent, he's so popular. But we wanted you all to see him first, so we brought him to here. And now I'll speak as a private citizen on the Town Council Budget, not as a member of the school committee. As someone who's been attending faithfully, as you know, all your meetings in the Budget Committee since 2003, I would like to commend the Town Council on the hard work that you did with this budget this year, with your late-night meetings and your Saturday meetings till 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And I'd especially like to commend, um, Mrs. Nancy Mello, Denise DiMediris, and the Treasurer, Denise Saret, because it was a very difficult process. And as I watch the news and read the paper and watch all the meetings, at this point I think Tiverton should be celebrating, because the town, the school budget came in at 1.9, and the town budget came in at 1.6, which is the lowest ever. If I remember, during the last council, the goal was 2.5. The big new amendment was going to be a charter change in 2.5. As you know, we can all go up to 4% legally. And as I go to state meetings, I ask other school committees, "What do you go up to?" And they said, "Of course, 4%. We need that to survive." But we don't. We're very careful with the taxpayers' money, but yet we have to provide the services. And with all the great things happening in the town, we want to keep it that way, and I do commend you for all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Town Council sitting with the Board of Licensing, non-advertised licenses. ELJ Incorporated, 703 Medicom Avenue, Bristol, Rhode Island, requests approval of street excavator license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Mr. Belucci?
Uh, good evening, and thank you. I'd be feel for you is a, uh, an application from a contractor that resides in Bristol. Uh, he's had a similar license, uh, in Bristol for many, many years. I've called him for references, and he's done fine work. So I just recommend him for a, for a approval of a street excavator's license.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the street excavator's license for ELJ Incorporated, 703 Medicom Avenue, Bristol, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, appointments and resignations, Harbor Commission. Appointment currently, there were three vacancies. We have David E. Vanier, 148 East Bello Drive, two-year term to expire, 7/15/2016. Mr. Vanier, you look awfully familiar.
Yeah, awfully familiar. Good evening, Council.
Do you have much experience with water?
Glad for punishment.
Are there any questions from the council?
Nice to see you back.
I would just like to say, I'm glad that you continue to have an interest in, and are looking forward to helping, uh, you helping us, especially on the Harbor Commission, you know, with the changes ahead of us.
Thank you. The only question I have is, I just, this just came to my head. There are three vacancies, Nancy. I think, is the Harbor Commission one of the commissions that has sort of a, um, special qualification to fill each box? I'm just wondering what the other two, if they are, are general members, or if they're specific? Do you know what I'm talking about?
It's usually one, because you're representing recreational fishermen.
Right. Okay, correct. So the other two, I'm wondering if we have to look for someone more specific. It, maybe I should just ask that in another court.
Well, I'm going to be putting an advertisement out anyway for the courts and commissions, because we need them on several courts and commissions.
All right.
So whatever the specification, I will put it right on the back of the petition, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
A move that we appoint Dave Vanier to a two-year term to expire, 7/15/2016, to the Harbor Commission.
Second. We have motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Welcome back. Welcome back. Harbor Master, resignation of Robert Elter Lissner.
Okay, this was carried forward.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Now that you saddle us with this clunker, I think we, uh, are well-tuned. Actually, I've been informed that there's another applicant pending for the Harbor Commission. And evidently, our reputation doesn't precede us, but the, uh, the issue before this night is that the resignation of our existing Harbor Master, he had made a recommendation of a particular young man as interim Harbor Master. We are coming up on our busy season. I believe he's provided you with his resume and expressed his interest in the possibility of being interim Harbor Master. And he is, he is a very qualified young man for that particular component of the job. Uh, I, he would obviously, the advertisement is being, is on your agenda, to advertise properly for a full-time, you know, for a full-term Harbor Master. Certainly, he'll throw his hat into the ring. He was in the, he threw it in last time around, but he wasn't 18. That's, that is a bare-line minimum qualification. He's now at least of age. Um, I have understood that there may be some other people that are interested, so we should go forward with the advertising and interviewing and such, the proper process. But I would admonish you that if Mr. Terlissner leaves, then we are right at the cusp of our busiest time. We want to be gearing up to get ready for the season. Uh, and so I would encourage the council to consider his, uh, his request. I would recommend you accept his request, that he be appointed interim Harbor Master at this juncture.
Nancy?
Well, I think Matt has the application, right?
I do.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we don't have it.
So I think that Matt would, would read it over and then, yeah, and give us his recommendation.
Because we weren't sure that you had the ability to even appoint.
Well, I was, I was just going to ask Andy if we could appoint him the interim.
Because it's a paid position, and it may need to go through. But in an interim, Andy's looking it up, he's not sure.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, well, first of all, Harbor Masters are different from most of the other stuff. It, state law says that it's the council that appoints the Harbor Master. So it's not an appointment of the administrator. So that's the first thing. Secondly, I think that you would have the power to appoint an interim Harbor Master. I mean, since you have the power to appoint, to begin with, I think that gives you the inherent power to an interim. Obviously, you couldn't appoint someone for, you know, a long interim term that would eliminate the use of the personnel board, but certainly for a short term, I think you have that power.
Are we clear? Mr. Cox, I, I know, I'm reading, um, the letter of resignation here, and it's still unclear as to, like, the exact cutoff date. We're, I'm seeing April of 2014, and so, you know, that's a 30-day or so window. Do we know?
I don't have an exact, um, from Mr. Terlissner. I know when, at our last meeting, he was not sure, but he knew it could be at the very beginning of April. He was, he was saying that he was, thought he, thought he was going to be able to make our meeting, which would be April 7th. But that's still, that's the beginning of the month. You know, whether or not, you know, you're now getting into, you know, you're in a 60-day window. Memorial Day weekend, two times, go to any marine facility, any boatyard, anybody that services people that have boats. There are two days that are absolute death nails in their calendars, Memorial Day weekend and Fourth of July. And I speak to that from experience, from a standpoint, I used to work at a, at a facility when I was a young man, and you would be pulling 10 and 12-hour days, getting up to those days, or more. Um, we are now within 60-day, you know, on, April 1st, we'll be within 60 days of that. So we need to get speed buoys in, we need to get the boat ready, there's, and weather, blizzards aside, weather's not too cooperative. So I, I would, I would not delay this. I really wouldn't. The young man is, you know, actually, Mr. Vanier could speak more in greater detail as to the level of assistance Tyler was to him, on a volunteer basis, um, if you have any questions of that. I, I would encourage the board to seriously consider appointing him. Um, and Mr. Vanier, you know, Terlissner's resignation could be effective, whenever his is effective, Mr. Loomis would come in as the interim. I'd just have them dovetail, and we'll, we'll push Mr. Terlissner for a specific date.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from the council?
Just to, go ahead. Are we in a position tonight? I thought we were trying to be in a position tonight to, um, execute on that.
But we don't have the resume.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a deal breaker?
I, I have a copy of his resume here, that'll be of any assistance. I know it's short notice. I can tell you, you know, he has been on the water since he was eight, eight years old, and is actually currently employed in the marine field down at Maritime Solutions down in Portsmouth. Um, when he was on Harbor Patrol as a, as a volunteer from 2010 to 2012, his 500-plus hours logged in on the, as the Assistant Mask Harbor Master, including installing and maintaining the no-wake buoys, mooring verification, vessel stop. He was under the tutelage of Dave Vanier when Dave was our Harbor Master. Vessel, vessel towing, rescuing. He has his, um, first aid, AED, CPR certification by American Red Cross as of, just recently, March 18th. So he's, you know, he is, has a boating safety certification in 2011 from DEM. So he's a qualified young man. I have seen him handle the vessel and such. Um, I'm sorry you didn't get this in your package. Thought it had gotten, gotten to you sooner enough.
Dave, would you support this recommendation?
Uh, yeah, Tyler's a very competent, uh, individual on the boat. Uh, he can handle the boat very well. Um, he knows all the skills required to be the Harbor Master. Uh, he's done them all with me. So, uh, yeah, I would recommend him for that position, yes.
When does it, when do you typically, um, put the boat in the water for the sea?
Uh, the boat usually goes in the water, uh, the first week in April. Uh, April 15th, the no-wake buoys have to be in, per the Coast Guard regulations, per our, per our permit for the no-wake buoys. So they have to be in on the 15th.
So one way or another, we need to meet that milestone.
That, that's correct. And, and I, I just don't know all of the qualifications, but, um, is Mr. Loomis from a, I mean, you mentioned CPR, AED, I mean, are, is he all up to par with any and all other qualifications? He needs the qualifications based for, uh, the basic qualifications required for the Harbor Master's position. Uh, he doesn't have any of the advanced things, doesn't have his captain's license or anything to that nature, uh, but he is also too young to get his captain's license. You have to be 21 to get his captain's license. So he could get a launch operator's license and, you know, minimal licenses, but, you know, to progress further, he has to be older, has to be more seasoned.
Okay. Um, I think, I have a question, Mr. Ty. I think we would have to request to put on the agenda appointment.
I thought that's what we were doing tonight.
Well, he doesn't say.
No, I meant, I, I thought that's what, we had this, we had this almost exact conversation two weeks ago.
Right. Uh, well, I, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda, to, uh, put an appointment of a interim Harbor Master on our agenda.
So moved.
Can we do that?
I don't think we can do that.
We can't appoint somebody.
You can't.
Well, the, well, I, I think the question is, is, um, how much of this is an emergency item, is the question.
Cause our next meeting is the 7th.
That's right. Which doesn't leave a lot of time to do things for the 15th between, that leaves one week, barely, to do the stuff between the 7th and the 15th.
And the boat is supposed to go in the water before that, is that what you said?
The boat typically goes in the first week and, right. So within, by the 7th, the boat is typically in the water. Uh, Mr. Terlissner did say that he would have it in the water before he resigned. That's what he said. Said he would have it in the water.
And, and how much time would Tyler need to put the no-wake buoys in?
Uh, that's usually done within a day, a weekend. Uh, you know, it's, it's not a, a very difficult thing to do. It's just, you know, typically, a couple of people is the best way to do it, instead of a single person. They are heavy.
I think the next council meeting's on the 14th.
No, it's actually, it's off. It's only two weeks away. It's the 7th, 'cause we moved that back in December when we're setting the meetings.
Ah.
So.
I will say that Mr., I'm sorry, his name is Tyler. I don't even know his name.
Loomis.
Loomis. His father did come in and give me an envelope with an application, but I had no idea it's an application for an interim Harbor Master. I thought it was for the assistant Harbor Master that they had talked about. So, I mean, it's not even distributed yet through the council.
Well, if, if it's the 7th, then.
Well, if, if Mr. Terlissner is going to put the boat in, would that give us enough time if we were to vote on the 7th?
I recognize, I'm sorry. That is the evening my commission actually meets, and I will not be at that meeting, because I'm working professionally that evening over in Bristol, so, um, there will probably, all probability, unless we meet perhaps in the interim, be nobody from the commission here, perhaps. I'll have to look into that with Nancy.
That's all right.
We'll keep the ruckus down.
Yeah. Um, you've, you've got later on the agenda tonight for advertising for the Harbor Master, but I would suggest that we put on for the agenda for April 7th, appointment of an interim Harbor Master, which I think you have the power to do, while it's pending the, um, the process of the application and personnel board and the appointment, so that you can do that.
Then, as far as the acceptance of the resignation, that would, I, I would hold off on that also.
Well, how about if you accepted effective April 7th? That way, if he's going to be here and still putting in the boat, I mean, I'm concerned also about liability issues, if he's going to be getting the boat in and so forth. also about liability issues if he's going to be getting the boat in and so forth. But that way, would tie in with having that there on the 7th, appointment of an interim one.
Either that or concurrent with the appointment of an interim harbor master.
I would make a recommendation, if possible, that you do a little bit of an overlap. You know what I mean? Maybe make his resignation effective on the 15th and hire the new guy on the 7th, so you have a little bit of an overlap, so that there can be some kind of training, transfer of duties, so on and so forth. Just a suggestion.
Well, that would be...
But do we even know when he's gonna be leaving? We don't know that.
He may be available until the 15th. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario is he's not.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna change that by pushing a date out.
All right, okay. I will request that we put the appointment of an interim harbor master on our next meeting, which is April 7th. And I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Robert L. Terlissner effective April 15th, 2014.
Is that a motion? Yeah, second.
I have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Let's hear it, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Recreation Committee, Kristen Plourd, 117 Merritt Avenue. Is Kristen here? Hi, Kristen.
Hi. So, yes, I'm Kristen. And I was approached by one of the members of the Recreation Committee, and she is also a mom, and her children play on the Tiverton Soccer League. My daughter plays for Tiverton Little League, and she thought that having another mom with a young child on the other side of Tiverton Little League would be a good idea, and I agreed.
Why don't you tell us a little bit more about yourself? We have the luxury of having this in front of us, but the audience doesn't.
Um, okay, so I'm a Tiverton resident most of my life, about 32 years. So I have grown up in the town, played sports, attended all the schools. I married, left, and came back. And this is where we're raising our family. And my husband is actually, right now, the director of Tiverton Little League softball. And we really have tried to put ourselves out there in the community, volunteer. We like to show our daughter that it's important to pay back the community and pay it forward. And I love my town, and I think that it needs to go as far as recreation-wise. I do think that we're kinda lacking, and there's some areas that could need some improvement. And fresh blood is always good, and I think being that my daughter is young, from what I understand, there's only one other mom with a young child, so it might just be beneficial to the Recreation Committee to have another young parent on.
Good. Any questions from the council? No. I just have a quick question of Mr. Tyte.
Yes.
Any potential conflict?
The Little League?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I mean, I'd have to recuse herself from particular items dealing with the Little League, but I don't think, as a whole, you want people with recreation issues on the Recreation Committee, so.
All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept, or we make the appointment of Kristen Plourd of 117 Merritt Ave. to a three-year term on the Recreation Committee, set to expire on April 15th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being involved.
Good night.
You too.
How many vacancies do we have?
We have some problems with that commission because we have people that haven't been attended, so the town administrator's working with the Recreation Coordinator to get that settled.
You've got a slow attendance with two members.
So that means...
But we give them the opportunity to reconcile themselves and see what they wanna do.
So currently, no vacancies?
Okay. Unfinished business? Financial business, town administrator.
Mr. President, before, is a request from the Department of Public Works. Two separate accounts, they need to take some money from trash removal, just about $6,000 worth, but $4,000 into repairs, and $2,000 into fuel to account for the spending pattern that has come up this winter. Director was here, if you had any question. There he is.
Only question I have is the negative $520 and 10 cents balance in the repairs, tires, accessory, whatever ACC stands for. We deficit spent in that account? Is that something we do typically?
No.
I mean, not in that account, I'm just saying in general. I've never seen that before.
Normally, we transfer into cover to ensure we don't have a deficit.
Yeah, okay.
But that particular account, we had to, I knew it was going to be underfunded, yet we still had to transfer $8,000 over to the Doser repair account to fix a major repair on a Doser that went over budget. So it's like borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, now it's come due. And fortunately, there was some funds available in trash removal, and this is caused by the winter. I mean, the winter just has pushed all of our accounts to the, stretched them right to the max, so.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask the treasurer a question. Would we be better served in transferring, if the money is available, $4,520 and 10 cents? Cause I don't think we would carry a negative balance.
Oh.
He's requesting $4,000, and the account shows a negative balance.
That $4,000 probably is part of the...
Right now, currently, it's minus 520, so if we transfer 4,000, there'll be $3,500.
Oh, I thought you had committed the 3,500. Is that just to give you a balance, a working balance?
Yeah, I guess it's a working balance till the end of the year, that'll be the June 30th.
Oh, okay.
It's still very thin. I mean, that doesn't, that won't go very far, especially if we have another storm coming up in a couple of days, so. Doesn't take it.
Is this Mosh's working balance?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Mosh's, yeah.
So this hasn't been encumbered? It's fun, okay, never mind. It's not really...
It's not, it hasn't been encumbered?
No, no. We keep our own books right up to the minute at DPW, which haven't gone through the treasurer, so.
So there's actually money in that account?
So it technically hasn't been paid, but it's encumbered?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So we're not deficit spending?
No.
No, it wasn't deficit spending, no.
Okay.
Well, perhaps maybe we avoid this in the future by having a consistent set of numbers from the treasurer.
Well, I actually think we had some things crossed in the mail here. As a practice, councilman, when I get a request like this, or even just to sign off on an invoice, what I'm doing now is going to the balance available to date, which is a report from the treasurer, and writing all the numbers down, making sure that after that invoice is approved, that there'd be a positive balance in that account. If there isn't, then I reach out to the director to make sure they make all the transfers. But in this particular case, this request went around for a couple of weeks because you initially asked for one and I said no, because it was going to exceed my authority, and I thought you needed to move more, which is how this request got to you. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, how do we get extra money in the trash removal account to cover for this?
Yeah, we should rebate for cardboard sales from Patriot disposal, some of $10,000 that we weren't expecting.
Actually, the director's being very humble, and I'm gonna give him some credit. He observed over a long period of time that the vendor wasn't in complete compliance with his contract, and called him on it, and got a rebate for the town for $10,000. It's good work, and it made this pocket of resources available for something he truly needs to run his operation.
Good, great. So do you want us to throw more cardboard away? Is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, it's valuable, I tell ya. It's valuable. It's good stuff.
Great job, Steve.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer for the DPW from account 5500-6457 Trash Removal to account number 55406648 Repair/Tires for $4,000, and a transfer from account 55006457 Trash Removal to account 55407611 Gas/Diesel for $2,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, good job, Steve. Thank you. New business, Mr. Laurie Kendricks, always wanted management chairman. Hi, John.
Every year, every year, we come before you asking for your approval to approve the projects that we put on the project priority list. For those that are familiar with this, the state RITM has a program of loaning money to communities that have projects that may qualify for their programs. They have the Community Septic System Loan Program, which we can get in $300,000 of lumps that will help people finance septic systems, or replacing or repairing septic systems. There's the Community Sewer Tie-In Program that helps people who have sewers that go by their house. It gives them financing, low-interest loan to tie in. And then there's street projects here that happen to correspond with the projects that were identified with the, in the facilities plan. There are the Robert Gray Priority Project, the Riverside Drive Area Sewer Project, and the Bay Street Area Sewer Project. Now, basically, we're not sure of where all the financing is coming from, if we go forward and do sewers in these areas. But by being on the project priority list, we have the option of going to RITM and the SRF program and getting financing or interim financing or whatever we need. We need, the two $300,000 ones, the first two items, we generally get every year, so that it helps people to finance septic system replacement and repair. So we may not use the other three, depending on if we get funds from rural development. It may, it may, one of these may be used for interim financing, we just don't know. But we certainly don't wanna not put them on the list, just in case.
And then the last two?
The last two, again, they're just on a list, and they mimic what was in the facilities plan. Realistically, you know, like the Riverside Drive Area Sewers, obviously, we're not gonna encumber $16 million, but we put the, we put the project in whole, and we've got, you know, boats to come up. The neighborhoods would have to vote whether or not they want sewers in their area, et cetera. So it's a, it's a long way to go, and these projects are just defined as kind of placeholders, just in case.
Okay.
These were on here last year, correct?
Correct, yes.
So it's just a, as you said, a placeholder?
Correct.
I just had two quick, two quick questions. On the first one, which is the Community Septic System Loan Program for $300,000, and just so that folks are clear, this program provides funding for private homeowners within the town who have a failed or substandard OWTS to upgrade their OWTS. So my question is, do we maintain an active list of kinda homeowners who could benefit from this? So assuming you get the funds, how do people know that they could tap into it? I guess, that's my question.
Any Tiverton resident that utilizes a septic system or a cesspool as their wastewater treatment and disposal is qualified to use it. So the active list would be any resident in town.
But they're aware that the funding is out there? I guess that's my question, is how do they...
It's been, it's been, we've been telling people about it for a lot of years. When people talk to their real estate agents, all the real estate agents know about it, if they're concerned about getting a house with a cesspool, a lot of people call me to confirm what their real estate agent is telling them. And so that's, that's how we've been...
Okay, okay, good. My second question is on the second one, which is the Community Sewer Tie-In Program. So this is, aims, this $300,000 aims to provide homeowners with the opportunity to utilize low-interest loans to tie into their sewer system. This money will provide 100 users an average of $3,000. And I just, I couldn't remember how the $3,000 might compare to the average cost of a tie-in. I was trying to get a sense of, well, how much is that three grand gonna actually cost? Or cover, rather?
Well, you know, basically, we put in sewers, for instance, on Canaanthas Avenue that goes right by people's homes, and so we encourage people to tie in, and it would cover from their house just to the tie-in. And so the cost is, can be, depending on the length of the tie-in and all that, it varies. But for the purposes of this, we're averaging like $3,000 a piece.
So that covers a decent chunk of the cost? I'm just trying to get a sense of whether this is gonna cover most, or if it's only that much?
It should cover all of the contractor's costs. It may cover the Fall River installation, the Fall River tie-in fee. If, once that fee gets taken away, then, you know, they won't have that fee anymore. And whatever, a portion of the betterment fee, those people up there have a $2,700 betterment fee.
Okay. Thank you. And I assume that the average is $3,000. It could be more if they're set further back from the street.
That's correct.
So if their house sat way at the end of the lot, obviously, there'd be a greater cost to be able to reach the house.
That's correct.
I believe we put a five or $8,000 cap on it because we don't want one person to take all of the money.
Anything else from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we allow the Wastewater Management Commission to submit the project priority list for SRF funding in 2015, as described in item G1.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Let's hear it, Carrie. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Tax Assessor, David Robert, requests town council consideration for resolution opposing Senate Bill 2677 and House Bill 7631 related to assessment of taxes.
Good morning, town council. How are you? If you'll pardon me, I'm gonna read through some notes that I have. Last year, this town council passed a resolution opposing Senate Bills 322A and the companion House Bill 5394. Both of those bills would have made new construction or improvements upon development property tax-exempt. In essence, any new construction that a developer would build in the course of the year would end up being tax-exempt. It would not go into our growth number, which helps offset taxes. So in essence, it would be shifting the tax burden from developers to every other taxpayer in town. So the town council passed a resolution opposing that, along with several other cities and towns. Ultimately, the bills got vetoed by the governor. This year, Senate Bill 2677 and House Bill 7631 have been introduced, which are basically identical to the bills last year. The only exception really is that they are now including foreclosed properties. So if a developer was to purchase a foreclosed home, we could continue taxing it at its current assessment. However, if they've put any substantial... However, if they've put any substantial money into a rehab, again, if that would be at a year-end typical growth factor, we, we can include that. So again, that's just an added number now that's being shifted. So currently, in an informal review of other cities and towns, currently, there's eight cities and towns that are going to their town councils, asking them to reaffirm the resolution from last year. Talking with Peter Schaefer from the League of Cities and Towns through the Lincoln Tax Assessor, she believes that the league is also going to be opposing this again this year. So I am asking for the town council to vote on that resolution to oppose these two bills.
Just some clarification, Dave. In essence, if a developer were to build to development, that means that property would not be taxed until it was sold. Is that correct?
In essence, the land would still be taxable, but the improvement itself would not be. And right now, the, the procedure that I have in my office is at the end of the year, any permits that have been pulled throughout the year but have not yet been finalized, meaning that they've pulled out a certificate of occupancy, I will drive by those structures usually the first week of December, estimate the percentage of complete, and then put that number into my growth factor, which again, helps offset the tax increase. But we could have utilized that in prior years. This bill would eliminate that. There's also a potential that depending on how a builder would pull and request those COs, we also may be losing revenue, not only as part of the growth factor, but throughout the year, we do have a state statute that authorizes me to prorate new construction. That might have some sort of impact as well. And currently, in our annual budget, we do estimate that we have $50,000 in priority taxes that, again, helps offset any potential tax increase. That may be impacted as well.
Any questions from the council?
Dave, I'm sorry. I think last year you had provided some sort of kind of estimate or forecast number on kind of the, the tax revenue that, you know, perhaps if this bill were to pass, what the town might in theory lose out on. Granted, I understand that's a moving target.
It's definitely a moving target. And it can range anywhere depending on, you know, we have several large developments that's on the books, but you have, they haven't moved on them yet. You know, if, if the market turns around and it heats up in the summertime, you know, who knows with that? So it is a moving number. Right now, that number can be anywhere between 30 to 100,000 dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we affirm the resolution that was passed last year opposing the bill.
Second.
I just, I just want to clarify that it's, we're not reaffirming the one that was passed last year. Because this one is actually new, because there's two new bills. As attached, resolution as attached. Second. Okay, so we have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you, town council.
Francis D. Gregorio, common cause Rhode Island, request council consideration of resolution for Senate Bill 2034 and House Bill 7593 to allow placing before voters a constitutional amendment to include the Rhode Island General Assembly under the jurisdiction of the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. I understand Mr. D. Gregorio is not here this evening.
He had another commitment.
Okay. I don't know if the council wishes to reschedule to hear from him, or if you just want to move forward with this.
I mean, in theory, I mean, you kind of agree that everyone should have
Especially with light of
Equal domain from the Ethics Commission, so I, I mean.
I agree with that. It's kind of a no-brainer.
I mean, my read of the draft legislation seems pretty straightforward here.
I have a slightly different opinion, but I think the thesis of it is, if we have to be subject to the Ethics Commission, I think everyone should join in the fun and be subject as well.
Not that any of them would be unethical.
No, no. Surely not.
Or be investigated for any reason.
In the interest of fairness, it should apply to all elected
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes. Okay. Any further discussion from council? I, I agree, I think that, you know, ethics should be a statewide policy and everyone should be under the same jurisdictions. So I will entertain a motion.
I just have maybe one correction.
I noticed it, Joan. I know where you're going.
Oh, under the wear asses?
No, under the senator's arse. Yes, okay, I'll correct it, I noticed it.
Yeah, I noticed.
Senator Ariano?
David.
Ariano?
Yep.
And, and we might have
Yeah, yeah, we might want to fix that.
It'll take a week to get it out.
Okay. Just saying.
Wait before we know who's that person is.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution supporting the referendum related to the code of ethics, specifically for S2034 and House Bill 7593, as presented, or as presented in G3 and to be amended by the town clerk.
Second. We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
Mr. Wiljack.
A bunch of job descriptions coming up. Four of them missed meeting. I'll get to the harbor master in a little bit. The first one on your agenda is the code enforcement official. I'm looking for the authority to go ahead and advertise and move to fill this position as quickly as possible. Notice that, given this untimely departure in where we are, just in terms of the budget year and construction season, I have not given a whole lot of thought to a complete reorganization of this department, although I believe it is warranted. We really do need to dig into this and look at the division between zoning enforcement, building enforcement, and some of the extra duties that are absolutely part of this job and need to be accomplished by its next occupant, which would include the digitization of the office, capturing a lot of the historical data in a format that's modern and accessible to people. And then, very importantly, serving as the town's floodplain manager, which is a very important issue. And I have an announcement, when we get to my announcements, I'm going to go over a couple of things that have been announced today. But it's a sophisticated job, and I tried to hit all of those elements in the advertisement and in the job description. But at this point, we haven't published anything anywhere, so if there are edits that you'd like to make, I'm more than happy to take them.
Okay, anything from the council?
Well, since you mentioned the floodplain manager, I see it in the summary of duties, but I didn't see it in the essential duties and responsibilities or qualifications. I didn't know if there was any type of training or certificate required to be a floodplain manager. So I wasn't sure if there was, what the qualifications were to be a floodplain manager.
There are, there's a course that one attends and goes through and then sits a test, and the entire thing is administered by a Rhode Island EMA. It is a, I didn't want to mandate that the person have a CFM in place before they were hired by the town, because so many grid building inspectors across the state don't have a community with a floodplain. So I didn't want to knock a whole bunch of people who might apply completely out of the running.
And they can get the training later.
Absolutely. Actually, in all honesty, when we sign this contract, when we forward the contract to you, it's probably going to include a date certain by which the individual has to have the CFM.
Okay, thank you.
My only comment, and I know I had provided the town administrator with some feedback here, and, you know, which is, under qualifications, says demonstrated experience with both residential and commercial construction, strongly preferred. I'll be a stickler and I'll say that I really feel like it's required on both fronts, only because, yeah, we may get someone in here who has plenty of residential, or, but I think, kind of given the potential activities that the town are going to face, may face in the future with commercial development, I think it would behoove us to really have someone who has real solid experience, demonstrated experience in the commercial space, so that, you know, this person is able to hit the ground running and, you know, we can get out ahead of stuff in that area, so.
I agree.
I would recommend that we say, we replace strongly preferred with required.
Required.
Either that, or we direct the personnel board, you know, according to
Well, basically, they use the qualifications that we give them, so if we want it to be required, we should say it's required. Anything else from the council regarding this position?
With those possible changes in, Mr. Gillick brings to light, is the salary we have for this position, is that going to be adequate enough for someone with this kind of experience?
Funny you should bring that up. That, that portion right now is in discussion. The budget committee did change our proposed salary. It actually increased it. So that's something that we have to, you know.
Yes, they, but, but they took out the part timer.
Right, they took out the part-time individual. So the, the net is the same, but, so, so at this point, I think there's a range and I would expect that the town administrator will, will look into what the range is around.
All right, I was at the budget committee meeting. I was having, there was a lot of difficulty counting folks that night. So I heard the proposal, wasn't opposed to it. It does put us in a, I prefer to start low and negotiate up, and now we're at this starting point.
We don't need to.
So in terms of being a tough negotiator, it's, it's less of a premium. But if you look at the municipal salary study, this would be pretty much in the sweet spot. This would be the kind of salary that would be commanded in a slightly larger community. So I think it would put us, certainly makes us competitive offering this position.
Yeah, you know, again, I mean, the salary is all, you know, could be based on experience and so forth and so on.
And you can do a probationary period if you choose. It can all be put into the contract, and there may even be a way, if, if you want to end up at 65, you make the CFM a requirement, say you have six months to get a CFM. When you do, your wage will go closer to 65.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that we start at, at the current dollars that we budgeted for.
Questions coming in are going to be, what's, what's the current guy making and, you know, what's historically been, right, I mean, that's, we, and you can say, well, we've, we're in the middle of a budget cycle now, so it's uncertain as to what the final number's going to be, but it won't be until June that we will have a
It wasn't too long ago we had the same situation with the town administrator also, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if we've got that right either.
No, I don't think so.
So I will move that we authorize the town administrator to advertise for the code enforcement position, subject to the attached listing and job descrip, advertisement copy and job description as, as submitted, but with that edit for mandatory experience with residential and commercial construction.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Wiljack, harbor master.
Mr. President, the next request before you is advertisement and job description for the harbor master. This position was filled fairly recently, some time ago, so I have not rewritten any of this. This is your existing stock language. A quick word of explanation about where we are. We're in a tough spot because of this resignation, coming on fairly short notice, right at the time when we're getting ready for the season. The current assistant harbor master already is the assistant and is authorized to do assistant duties, so he's there and present. I've gotten more than one signal from that party over whether he wants to be the harbor master, or if he wants to be interim, or if he wants to stay on as deputy. This is one position, which in your charter specifically references the personnel board. The harbor master must go to the personnel board. What I wanted to avoid was chasing down an interim, following the personnel board process and only, I might as well just hurry up and fill the harbor master and just get it done, rather than have an interim who only serves. So you'll notice in the accelerated advertisement schedule, I want to go to advertisement very quickly with this and resolve it very quickly. So I'm giving a resume period of two weeks, and I'm going to be requesting that the personnel board meet very quickly after the close of that date to appoint this position. I am encouraged, I will say this much, I've gotten inquiries from two parties, both of whom are local and are, have very strong qualifications at the advanced level.
Anything from the council? I still think though, as we discussed earlier, I think we still have to have some, something in place.
You'll need some presence, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize a town administrator to advertise for the position of harbor master.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Recreation coordinator.
Mr. President, this third item is the recreation coordinator. It is a position that, to the best of my looking, I don't know that the town has advertised for before. You had a longtime dedicated public servant who served the town this capacity for many years, and this is really probably the first time you've had a full transition to someone. In my opinion, this individual has actually compensated more than the harbor master. So if we're going to use the personnel board for the harbor master, we should use the personnel board for the recreation coordinator. And there were other assurances that I wanted in place that this individual will minimize exposure to liability for the town. And going through a rigorous screening process, we can make sure that all the background checks and other personality qualifications that we want to have with someone who's going to be dealing with so many different people and there's, there's cash involved with beach take and all the rest of it, I just wanted to be sure that we had everything in place to do this right. So this will be the first time and hopefully, it'll go well. Same accelerated schedule, by the way, as harbor master, because I think somewhere here I made a typo, I said the recreation coordinator position is upon us. I meant season.
We know.
But both, really. We need to fill a position. And I did vet this with at least two members of the recreation
My only question on this is that, you know, in the harbor master one, we actually put a dollar amount for the annual salary, and then in here, I didn't see one, just didn't know if we should allude to that at all. In the advertisement copy, I guess.
So I would ask, what is the pleasure of the council? Because there was, the last time we've all checked in with this, there was even some doubt as to what's in what account here. Now, if you want to stick with the 8,000, what was it, 8,500, there was a five in there somewhere.
It was a change, I think.
It was 8,500 maybe.
It was 8,550, I think.
8,550. If that's what we really want to be very clear about, and there's no duplication anywhere in these budget items, then that's, we can put that into the
Yeah, I think that was clarified, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Mello, that the 85 was not part of that other number. Right, so the 8,550 is, is for the recreation coordinator.
Is there any risk that that changes?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Is there any risk that that number changes between now and the FTR, so we kind of go out advertising at a
In my opinion, that's the number that we want.
Just playing devil's advocate.
At this point in time, that is the number. I can't guarantee if that will remain the number, but at this point in time, that is the number.
I mean, the language should be the same as it is in the harbor master position, which says that the salary for the harbor master is part of an annual budget request.
That was a good point, though.
I would recommend that we add that language in and insert that figure.
The only thing I have is just food for thought, that it strikes me that we, we don't offer an opportunity for interested candidates to electronically submit their don't offer an opportunity for interested candidates to electronically submit their materials, and so that might be something we consider in future.
Well, it's not too late, we can do it now.
Well, that's fine, it doesn't matter.
I think we did that with, with the TA position.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Anything that you advertise, like in the Providence Journal, goes on monsta.com and then they forward, things like that. We haven't done it necessarily with the small ads like these that we put in just kind of times, but we can.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like a.
21st century thing to do.
Yeah, it seems like putting it, stuffing it in a manila folder and sealing it, and it just seems like an old school kind of way.
Some of us are still manila folder people.
That's fine.
They're still confidential till they get through Personnel Board, so I still put them in an envelope and seal them.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with adding the email address if they.
Even if it's just for questions and whatnot.
Okay, anything else? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the town administrator to advertise for the position of Recreation Coordinator, subject to the attached advertising copy and job description and any alterations we made just now.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Continuing along.
The fourth on four is the Custodial Maintenance Position. So everybody following along at home knows, we really had three individuals laboring in some capacity against these duties. A former Custodial Maintenance Person and a seasonal maintenance worker, who more or less drew some form of pay for most of the year, but mostly in the summertime. We're in litigation with the latter. The town has reached a settlement with the first. That position is technically still filled until April 21st. So the only position we can fill quickly is this Custodial Maintenance Position that was recently vacated on the retirement of Rick Barrett. We desperately need these people to come online, because I joked the other day I was going to dress up like Bonnie and walk around Town Hall and sing the cleanup song, clean up, clean up, everybody do their share, because right now, that's what we're doing. And with snow on the way and all the rest of it, we're just going to get on top of this. I will try to brush over this as quickly as possible. Labor Council and I met with the union to discuss several issues that arise out of these three positions, and I can only say that not all of it's ready for primetime, but it was a very good meeting. One of the products that came out of that meeting was a rewritten job description for this job. We are trying to hold a couple of thoughts back in terms of what is the complete scope of this job, because I think we need to talk about how many hours do we want this person to work and at what rate of, of pay do you think, those two positions? So if you look at your total budget, is there room to reorganize this function, maybe take one down a little bit and take one up a little bit? My observation is, your second position at one time had his hours cut, and as a result of that, some substantial regular maintenance simply wasn't done. And if you're in the senior center and you look at the floor, it hasn't been buffed completely fully for a long time, and all those little items have started to fall by the wayside, and the building of that age really needs to be kept at a very high level. And it was also made this particular employee unavailable late in the afternoon, and that, who says we're not going to have a spill or some other issue late in the afternoon, so that duties aren't covered. That was positively received and is a, is something that we should all consider talking about. As for now, what was added here, perhaps most significantly, is the CDL license requirement. There are a lot of benefits that come along with this. It's a somewhat more skilled individual, more useful, because he can hop into a truck. He won't get stranded anywhere, maybe this is a scar from my childhood. When I used to drive the pickup, my boss would drive the dump, and then he'd take off in the pickup, leaving me with the dump with no food, no water, and no latrine. So, but more importantly, there's also a whole protocol around the CDL, which requires annual, could require random annual drug testing. You go through it, and it's one way to keep track of somebody who's on the road all the time and busy all the time, and hopefully generates a lot of value for the town with his skills. Much of the rest of the job description is an adaptation of former job descriptions for this role, so you'll see, it's sort of a, a little bit older approach to, you know, you describe all the working conditions and the environment, but at this type of job, it's important. The only other thing I added was, in work environment, there really cannot be an excuse for an individual not to wear their safety equipment. So whether you're, it's hot as heck outside or you're in confined spaces, you have to wear your safety glasses if protocol requires you to, and there's no excuse for not doing it, and that covers us from any potential problem with that.
Anything from the council?
The one question I have is, there's a reference in the advertising that maintenance of several town buildings, primarily Town Hall and the Senior Center, and I'm wondering sort of the mechanics of how we maintain other buildings and how that fits into the overall position. So there are a lot of other buildings on here that I presume are dealt with in another manner, and I don't know if that has to do with a contract for someone else or what.
Rick really was covering four buildings. So when it would snow outside, he'd run over to the library and help them with snow removal outside. And then, even though we don't use the community center the way it's been used in the past, there was still the occasional pass of a vacuum and some snow removal done there as In terms of designing this position, first of all, it doesn't look like Judson Street's going to be utilized to the same degree anymore, it's not, doesn't rise to the level being mentioned here, and the library's moving. So, you know, we really want this person to focus on the needs of these two buildings, so that really does keep one person very busy.
The police and fire, they're done in-house, or they're done in some other arrangement?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Now, even though the, the library is moving.
Doesn't pay them doing the beaches or anything like that?
Oh, no.
No. Now, even though the library will be moving to a new location, are we sure that they are expecting the same level of service from this maintenance person?
At the Budget Committee presentation, they did say that they still expect what, yes.
And actually, I think, once all is said and done, the duties at the library would change anyway.
Well, all they do now is snow removal.
Right, because it would be a town building there.
What's a town building now?
What are you getting at?
Yeah, it's on the smaller side. You're going to have a brand-new, modern facility with sidewalks that need to be completely brushed off on every event.
Yes, we suggest a lot more work to clear that.
Yeah, a lot more work, and that's why I think you've, where your foreman position has to be defined to include those responsibilities. Because if you, if you downplay the community center as a building where that person would spend all of his or her time, then you're going to have a lot more effort to throw at the library and the parks.
Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we authorize the town administrator to advertise for the position of Custodial Maintenance Person.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Continuing with the town administrator, Fall River Casino.
Now, I don't have anything prepared for you. There were two members of the council who voiced an interest in having this put on the agenda for discussion purposes. I think the public's well aware of the fact that Fall River City Government held a hearing last Thursday. I don't know if Councilor Lambert made it or not.
Yes, actually, Council Lambert actually attended the meeting, so if you want to just give a brief overview, Jay.
Well, I had, first of all, I couldn't ask, ask any questions. I discussed that with Mayor Flanagan, but he said that there were just too many people from out of town, and that if he got through all of the hands-up from Fall River that he would get to us, never got to us. But I did have an opportunity to speak, unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity to speak to the CEO from Foxwoods. He had to leave, leave after baking his presentation, but I did have an opportunity to speak with his representative, a Mr. Hancock, and I also spoke with Mr. Fiola, who's the head of Economic Development in Fall River. It was a warm reception. Mr. Fiola, at one point, indicated that, that the town of Tiverton had his promise, in quotes, that we would have a voice at the table and that whatever concerns that we had would be addressed. The gentleman that I spoke with from Foxwood, Mr. Hancock, had an engineering and architectural background. I was surprised that he was quite familiar with Tiverton, and indicated that he was aware of what our issues were. He had already measured off the distances, for example, to Stafford Road, and corrected me when I said, I think it was .4 miles, and he said, no, no, it's .26 miles to Stafford Road. And he indicated to me that at any time the town thought it was appropriate to have some discussion with Foxwood, just get on the phone. As a matter of fact, he said he would again mention this issue to Mr. Butera, who's the CEO of Foxwood, and that we could make a phone call if we wanted to. He assured me that Mr. Butera would take our call. The bottom line, however, is that there are two, two remaining obstacles to a casino in Fall River. One is, there has to be a referendum, and that'll be coming up in a couple of months. And I can, I have no idea at all how that referendum will come out, but there was certainly some opposition voiced at this meeting on Thursday by some of the residents. The second issue is that even if the referendum passes, it then has to get the approval for its license through the Massachusetts Casino Commission. Mr. Butera did go through that process with us briefly as part of his presentation, and as some of you know, Foxwood did have a referendum in Milford, was turned down by the voters in Milford, but they have already gone through with the presentation before the, the commission in, the Casino Commission in Massachusetts, so they wouldn't have to duplicate that work. At least that was Mr. Butera's indication. So the bottom line is, I really came away with the impression there really is nothing to do at this point. I mean, there may be absolutely nothing to do ever, obviously, if the referendum turns against the casino, and we'll know the answer to that in about two months. At this point, my suggestion would be to do absolutely nothing until we see the outcome of the referendum.
Anything from the council?
Let's say the referendum, let's say the referendum does pass, then what will we do?
Well, it was, I, I will tell you what Mr. Hancock told me. He said that if this is going through, he said, I promise you, we will address your issues, and if there is a call made to Mr. Butera on behalf of the town of Tiverton, Mr. Butera, the CEO, will handle it personally. He will take the phone call. Mr. Hancock, all I can say, was very familiar with our issues, and Mr. Fiola indicated, and to use his language, you will at some appropriate time have a voice at the table. So I'm quoting Mr. Fiola. I think that's about all they could, you know, at this point, what else can they say to me? They weren't going to physically throw me out of the building, so they were very nice. So at this point, I'm not so sure there is anything to do until we get past that issue of the referendum. Now, Mr. Butera was very confident, based on what happened in Milford and the, and the presentation that they've already made to the Casino Commission in Massachusetts, that if they get past the referendum, they will get their license through the Casino Commission.
Is, is it possible, and Jay, I don't know if you know this, if there are materials available, that as a council, we can start to better familiarize ourselves with kind of the scope and scale of, of what they're talking about as a kind of precursor to organizing our thoughts and potentially voicing our concerns and all of that stuff?
That is a very, very interesting question. They made it very clear that this is not a Foxwood. I do forget the numbers, but I think I was, I think the presentation indicated that the number of rooms that they have available for Foxwood at this point is over 2,000. They anticipate never having more than 200 rooms here in Fall River, so it's a much smaller operation. They also indicated that this is not a high-rise. They had some conceptual drawings, and as best I could tell from the conceptual drawings, the casino part of it is never going to be more than two stories high. So it's, it's a Foxwood in miniature, my, my guesstimate would be it's probably going to be a tenth of the size of Foxwood.
What was the proposed site?
Well, the proposed site is, is where you make, the Harbor Mall, where you make the exit now on Route 24. The area where Walmart was and Staples is, and they're going to take over the Kmart property as well. They also gave an indication of where the expansion area would be, and that would be an expansion into the area where Shores was, and going along Rhode Island Avenue toward what was, what, the old Laura Lake School at the end of it, so. So that's roughly the area that they're, they're talking about, but that the current plan is only for the, the Harbor Mall area.
Stick a monorail in there and shuttle back.
You know, obviously, it's, it's, it is very early, but some of the issues, obviously, is the impact that anything that large would have on the town, along with our police force, our, our citizens who may be impacted by people who don't know where they're going, driving through our neighborhoods. Not that I want to say casinos bring crime, but they do bring certain elements. So those would be things I think that this council would be readily willing to work to make sure those things do not impact our town. Unlike Jay, I don't personally think it's going to happen in Fall River. I think that there are other sites in Massachusetts that I think will probably get the nod before Fall River, but that's only my own personal opinion.
It's a tough location where they propose it.
Yeah.
Just the infrastructure alone needs to be completely redone.
Yeah.
I, I would just ask the town administrator, just kind of keep your thumb on the pulse of it, and as information becomes available, if we can get it, to stay informed.
I think we should gather it and put it in a file folder that you can access at your convenience. You may find, there are so many references in this presentation to their Milford proposal, and it wouldn't surprise me, they spent so much money on the engineering and design of that structure, that if you find Milford Casino vote, and just Google it, you will very quickly get to the opposing websites, one from Foxwoods, one from the residents, where they went back and forth in great detail, it was a very informed debate about mutual aid runs, total public safety runs. It was pretty interesting, and as you know, Milford voted two to one against, so.
They made up their mind.
Interestingly enough, Mr. Hancock asked me those very questions, what our relationship is with Fall River right now, do we have mutual aid? So he was very familiar with those type of issues. Also, a number of neighborhood groups, I spoke to representatives of some neighborhood groups, and they're going to be having meetings as well. I asked them to put my name down and the telephone number, I'd like to attend the neighborhood groups and get, you know, to stay aware of what's happening. I have absolutely no idea at all how, how a referendum would end up in Fall River. I'm told, and I think this was the statistic that they were giving at the, at the meeting, that the unofficial unemployment rate in Fall River is now 27%. You would have thought, well, gee, how could this miss? They're finally going to get jobs in Fall River, but I, I can't say I came, necessarily came away with that impression that this was, this was going to be a winner.
It's certainly a highly nuanced conversation when you talk about the economic benefits of host communities and the neighboring communities when casino sites are developed. But unfortunately, that's not, we don't have a dog in, in that fight, so to speak, but I think once it does have, have some form of concrete, you know, legs, we ought to be prepared to at least opine on, you know, our own sort of implied impacts and whatnot. So I think we should be ready to, to have that conversation, because there's certainly a lot of, a lot of studies and a lot of information and a lot of historical data we can tap into. lot of, lot of studies and a lot of information and a lot of historical data we can tap into just to get an idea of what to expect if, you know, ultimately, a casino comes to town. And I, I'm cautiously optimistic, but I, I'm, I don't know, I share some of your sentiments, Ed, that they're going to have a tough road ahead.
And I think if, not that I'm not a gambler, though, but I have been to Foxwood and I have been to Mohegan Sun, and if you look around both those, and they're major casinos, there is very little economic growth around them.
No.
Towns around them did not benefit from having all this here.
I mean, they get the tax revenue, but it's pretty much it.
Yeah, that's about it. I mean, people go in, it's a destination, they're not looking to spend their dollars anywhere else, you know, so other than drawing on services, I don't see a benefit.
And, you know, if we're going to go down this road, just one concern that, one concern that, I was talking to somebody the other day who has some experience and out of state, and what appears to be a phenomenon is, as these get more, you know, the smaller sites further, you know, closer together, it starts to dilute the potential pool of consumers, and it just doesn't, it's not the whiz bang.
There's just excellent dollars to go around.
It's not the whiz bang of one big casino within, you know, a 300-mile radius, so it's certainly something we need to really get some understanding about.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Yeah, thanks, Jay, for attending. And again, I'll ask the town administrator to keep his finger on the pulse and act and just be aware of anything new that may come from our friends across the state line there. Bids and requests for proposals can't be shut.
I'm here on behalf of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. In February, we put out a request for proposals for consulting services. There were two responses received, and you have in front of you the master scoring sheet for those two responses and the recommendation to hire the Cecil Group as consultants for the project.
Kate, what was the biggest difference, in your opinion, between the Cecil Group and Mason and Associates?
They were both excellent proposals. I think that the big difference was the ability to perform the work within the budgetary constraints, and also the fact that the Cecil Group is currently doing other work with the town. They previously performed the town center study, they're currently working on the Main Street, Main Road Challenge Grant Project, the General Commercial Zoning Project. So they have a large amount of our data already within their systems. They are tied in with our GAS data. They've organized and held public meetings in the town, so they know what, you know, what works as far as gathering public input and disseminating public information. So I think they had a head start, and that was the big difference.
Any other questions from the council?
And we would be commencing their services.
As soon as possible.
Right away.
Within seven days of the contract signing, they would be working.
Great. Anything else from the council?
And we have the budget for this?
We have a current budget, a budget in the current year, so this would be a phased project. The current year budget would be committed, and then it's a contingent budget for the next fiscal year. So they have tasks broken out by fee, and basically, we would purchase the services that we can afford based on the budget that's approved.
Anything else from the council? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve hiring the Cecil Group as the planning consultant for the Comprehensive Community Plan Update.
Second?
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And is it okay with the council to have Mr. Tights work with the Cecil Group on the contract language? I do have a draft contract that I submitted to the town clerk. I'm not sure.
It's fine with me.
Okay, Mr. Tights.
It's fine with you?
Yes.
I did take a, I did take a quick look at it. We've already, since we've already negotiated contracts with them before, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Maybe it's still on the previous contract.
Okay. Thank you so much, Kate.
Thanks, Kate.
Okay, town administrator, items and announcements.
Mr. President, I have a few, but I'll try to be quick. For me in this town, there is some interest in the flood insurance program, and on March 21st, President Obama signed into law a repeal and revision of a significant portion of the flood insurance program, which will probably have a significant impact on at least some of the policyholders in town, reducing that draconian increase that they were experiencing. Just so we have a ballpark, there are about 6,852 policies in place all across Rhode Island. About 182 of those policies are right here in Tiverton, and the coverage value is just about $45.7 million. So of those folks, there is the belief that at least half of them may get some relief from the president's action. However, as Reema has written to me today, about 43% of policyholders in Rhode Island do have subsidized flood insurance rates that will continue to see increases over time. So those are her words. That's Michelle Burnett at EMA. And then the last thing, and this goes to the qualifications of the zoning official and the floodplain manager. We were halfway, we, the town, was halfway into qualifying for the community rating system, a voluntary incentive program that's run through NFIP. You go above and beyond what's required of you for planning, and you can get a discount on your premium. This official at EMA writes, "The town of Tiverton would have the opportunity to save its policyholders a minimum of $12,000 in annual premiums if we were to achieve that." Now, you notice that the city of Newport has recently struggled getting this done, but hopefully, we would get it done properly, and we'd be able, we'd be approved. So that's what, we're keeping an eye on, on these developments as we go along. Secondly, we did have a discussion about the Harbor Commission. There are two vacancies remaining. I do have one application that came in today, and Councilman Pelletier's right, so when you were having that conversation, I looked up in your ordinance book. You have 11 members on the Harbor Commission, and many of them must represent specific groups of interest. I think there's nine of them are some very specific. This particular applicant will probably qualify across three or four. So you've got recreational fishermen, commercial fishermen, recreational boaters, commercial boaters, and it's broken out that way. So we are still interested. If members of the public want to communicate with my office or with the clerk's office, we'll get the actual what seat, what two seats are still sitting there, but we would really like to see this commission come up to full complement. I've been to almost all of the boards and commissions that meet regularly, and there has not been a quorum issue. With the Harbor Commission, there has been difficulty getting everybody around the table to make a quorum, so I would urge people who have an interest to come out and participate. On announcements, Wednesday at 7:00 here at Town Hall, Representative Jay Edwards has got Ripta coming in to talk about Ripta service here in town.
When was the date?
So that's March 26th, which is Wednesday, at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. On the 7th of April, some people are very interested in this, on the 7th of April, Rhode Island Kids' Count will have its annual breakfast and release its Kids' Count Fact Book. That event is in Warwick. It's a breakfast. That's April 7th. 60 bucks for breakfast. That's a lot of eggs. April 26th, which is a Saturday, this year's Rhode Island Historic Preservation Conference will be held in and therefore celebrate the town of Warren, and that's $40 for an entire day full of historic events. The last thing I want to mention is, there's been quite a bit of conversation back and forth about what the town pays for electricity, and the different buying groups that different entities around the town have signed into. I just want to give you some context. There's a lot of research that still needs to be done. I want to give some context to this. The standard offer, which is what National Grid sells generated electricity, if you don't have any special arrangement with a buying group, you're just coming to the marketplace on your own, is 8.564 cents per kilowatt hour. So it's 8.564 cents. Pretty much, you see that on your residential bill, it's very similar rate. The school department in the town of Tiverton is buying through Constellation, and they're getting 7.79 cents per kilowatt hour. The town of Tiverton, for its accounts, is purchasing power through the REAP, R-E-A-P, which is an entity created by the League of Cities and Towns. The town is getting 6.67 cents per kilowatt hour, a substantial break from the standard offer and a slightly better deal than the schools. But there's a whole lot more research that needs to be done in terms of contract length, when do they expire, what are the terms, are those rates fixed, do they float? But I just thought we'd have those basic benchmarks. Both entities in town do better by buying power through buying groups, and it's now just a question of how we're going to go forward to get the best deal for the entire town. That's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Council announcements, comments, and questions?
Mr. Grohlak?
Oh, sorry, I just have, I have three really quick here. The first is, I'm wondering if we could, something that we had talked about a little while ago, but it's kind of been off the radar for a little bit, but tried to get a status of, if folks remember, we had been approached at the council level with a plan or a proposed plan from the DEM to do debris storm processing at the town dump, and we had provided some feedback to the then-town administrator as well as the DPW director. We haven't heard much on that front in a while. I don't think, I don't know if it's gone away, but I was just wondering if we could try to get an update on that.
Then I would, I would request that our emergency management team.
Good evening. We have still been working on it. We held it in abeyance with the transfer of the administrator and such, but we would like to bring it back to you. We would like to discuss it. We know that there is, Conservation Commission has some questions on it, but we would like to bring it back to you and go over it again with you.
Sure. Why don't we put it on our agenda, not, not the next meeting, but if you'll look forward, Mr. Wojcicki?
Okay, great.
Thank you, Chief.
My second request of the town administrator is to try to get a more exact amount that we have in our recycling budget. So these are the funds that we, the town gets from the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation. Just curious as to how much exactly is in there. There's something that I'll bring to the council at another time. And then, then the third thing is, I just, I don't know if this is possible, but meeting after meeting, I get and read with much interest the informational packets that Mrs. Pelletier puts together, and I feel a bit hamstrung because I can't ask you any questions or try to engage you and others in an open discussion on your ideas or whatever. So I guess I'm just, I'm making the request if.
All they have to do is put it on the agenda.
I know, and I'm making a plea in public.
Would you like me to put it on the agenda?
I, I think from time to time, I think it would be beneficial, because I think, I just think there are things.
Well, Mrs. Noll can tell me which is a convenient one. I'll be available.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's good. I just, I want to ask questions, and I can't, and.
And I feel the same way, and I do have thousands of ideas.
And I'm just. Let's put them all in the next agenda. Items A through triple Z. And I agree, and Mrs. Pelletier, I'm just trying to have the opportunity to have the discussion and perhaps plug that sort of thinking into the right arena in town to whether or not we vet it, kick the tires on it, if it's, we find a fit, great, if not, you know, we don't, and kind of take it from there.
I dropped off the new promotional band this afternoon.
And that's a really good example. I just think we should be aligned on promotional sorts of content, and, you know, if we're going to commit to a full-blown marketing campaign for the town of Tiverton to drive X, Y, and Z, I think we should plug that into a larger forum. So that's all. And that's all.
And don't get the dog park.
Yeah, and the, and the dog park. I've had plenty of people come up to me about the dog park. So in any case, that's my request.
We may be able to get that rolling again, the dog park.
I think all the previous things that I've opened.
Good, get on the agenda.
Mr. Roderick? I promised to keep this brief, but I think it's something that should be addressed. For one reason, I'm getting phone calls about it. I did not make the budget meeting this past Thursday because I was at the casino meeting, but I did have an opportunity to listen through public access, listen to the budget committee meeting. And to keep it in context, altogether, the Budget Committee recommended a reduction in the legal budget of $28,455,000. Well, that's an issue. I think that simply represents a difference of opinion. I wouldn't raise that issue at this point. But there were some comments made, and I'm going to limit myself to just one issue. The litigation request submitted by the town council was described initially as simply outrageous. Well, that then set the tone for the discussion by the Budget Committee of that budget item. One member of the Budget Committee indicated, indicated that we were intentionally dragging out this litigation over periods of 10 to 12 years. We were assured by Budget Committee people, well, one or two of them, that many of these cases could have been settled years ago. We had an urging from members of that Budget Committee, and I'm just quoting, that we need to settle these cases, that in fact, our council is intentionally postponing litigation. And I assume this is all meant to build up litigation fees. I have no other reason for it. At one point, a member of the Budget Committee indicated that Mrs. Odell's case should have been settled five years ago. Mrs. Odell is on the Budget Committee. I raised this point because, one, I'm getting questions about it, but I want to assure you that this town council is not intentionally dragging out cases to build up litigation fees for litigation attorneys. That is absolute nonsense. If we can settle a case, we settle a case. And if the, at one point, the town, one of the members of the Budget Committee indicated that there were several cases that were at least five years old that should, that should have settled, and assured the other members of the Budget Committee that he had spoken to the plaintiffs in those cases, and based on the information he had, those cases could have easily have settled. It's all nonsense. And if the Budget Committee, this is my message to the Budget Committee, if they have the identity of any cases they could settle, bring them to our attention, let us know what the settlement proposals were, let us have the benefit of your assessment and evaluation of the settlement value of those cases, and we'll gladly take a second look at them. But I want to assure anybody that listens to public access that there is no deliberate effort to build up litigation expenses by this town council. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Back to parades. I just want to let you know that I attended the St. Patrick's Day Parade and marched in it in Newport Saturday. It was cold, but it was pretty well-attended, and it was a good opportunity to talk with some, casually speak with some of the other members of the delegation on the state level, and one senator, Jack Reed was there, and David Cisalini. So it's good to be, I think, for. So it's good to be, I think, for us at least, to have some amount of exposure so that they know we're still hanging around and we have interests in, in certain issues. That's the, so I will encourage, next year, anybody who's still around to, to march in that parade. The other thing I have is, is for the clerk and the, the town solicitor, I'm kind of bringing back old questions that we were talking about, a memo on advertising costs and the legalities of what we're required to advertise for and in what publications and how we may reduce those costs. I am just giving you a heads-up that I'm going to put a formal request in this week for that, for the next meeting or the meeting after that. I had also requested information about the various accounts that we invest. I know there's a memo on the Perpetual Care Fund, but I'm more interested in the financing end of it. There was some question about what returns we were receiving on what accounts, where they were positioned. I just wanted to get a better understanding of what that looked like. I wanted to just ask when our fee schedule was going to be up for renew, and I can't remember. So that's just a question. The last thing is something I mentioned, unfortunately, to Jim very shortly before he retired, was a better understanding of bike lanes. We have more bike lanes in town than we did at any point ever before, and I just want to try and understand the scope of those bike lanes. We're getting into biking season. I live very close to a bike lane that is almost entirely occupied by vehicles almost all the time, so I just want to sort of get a better idea of how we deal with those as, as they become more popular and more prevalent. I know they're not everywhere, but I live in Stonebridge, so it's a pretty bike-friendly area. That's it.
Anything else?
Just one thing. This Friday night is Recognition Night, hosted by the Tiverton Lions Club. It's Friday, March 28th. 6:00 PM is the social, 7:00 PM is the buffet dinner. It's at White's. Tickets are available, some at the town hall here. The honorees are Sergeant Daniel Raymond, Jr., from the police, Joshua Ferrer, firefighter, William Phillips from the high school, Christine Costa from the middle school, and Susan Patriaka from the ranger school. So if you can attend, please do.
It's this Friday?
This Friday. Cost of the tickets is 25.
Thank you, Joan. I just want to just reiterate what Mr. Lambert said. Those who have been on the council as long as we have have known that we fought tooth and nail to settle a lot of cases. Some are not settleable, if that's a real word. We have tried and tried, but the opposing parties don't want to settle. And I, I take litigation very seriously. I don't think we are suit happy or nor do we go after people just for the sake of going after people. We do what we feel is in the best interest of this town. And unfortunately, you know, people have an idea of what they think goes on, and there are a lot of times, because of the legal nature of things, that you cannot say what is really going on. And it really bothers me when people think that, that we would allow our town solicitor just to bill us just for the sake of making money. I think anyone who's watched us in this last budget cycle knows how much we care for every dollar that this town has to spend. So I just hope that's loud and clear out there. Thank you.
I'll say one last thing, and I wasn't going to, but I've attended every, and excuse me for my voice, but I've attended every Budget Committee meeting this year. There's a lot of absurd statements that are being made by certain individuals, mainly one. And I encourage people who hear these statements, really look into them and make sure that this fact, based with what is being said, because I've had to hold back a lot because there are a lot of absurd statements being made right now that simply aren't true. And that's all.
Okay. Moving along. Town Solicitor, items and announcements.
Well, on topic. And I'll just, I'll just comment without getting into any specifics. Almost all the cases that the town's involved with are not a sort of simple thing of saying, oh, someone wants $100,000 for it, we could settle it with 50 and, you know, save the cost. There are a couple like that, mainly in the labor field. Almost all of our litigation expenses are dealing with injunctive relief, stopping people from doing things. We get complaints from the same people about what their neighbors are doing. We have municipal court matters, we have appeals. The only case that I can actually think that, where the town said, "We're going to step into this and spend the money," is with the Secana River Bridge tolls, which certainly was something, you know, in the benefit of the town. All the other ones are ones where we're on the defendant's side of the action. So we don't necessarily have a choice either.
And just from the meeting that we had, the joint meeting with the other two town councils, Bristol and Portsmouth, we were essentially got, were apprised of what those fees are. They're not necessarily all legal fees that go into the pockets of attorneys. They're expert witnesses, they're studies and reports, you know, so for whatever that's worth.
Okay. So back to, back to the specifics on the agenda. First item, K1, is a memorandum on the burial grounds of the Perpetual Care Fund. There was a question that was raised after the report, talking about how much funds go into basically the endowment for perpetual care versus operating. As you see in the memo, the state law requires a minimum of 20% of the, of the funds to go into that perpetual care fund. And we're apparently putting in 44%. So we're, we're well above the minimum required, so.
Is that by just default? That's what we put in, or is it by something that we've, a policy we've adopted?
I mean, I think that's really more to come back to the Cemetery Commission. My, my hearing of it was sort of default. That's what their budget is running, between what they are getting on the one hand and the budget and sales and what it's costing them to maintain it.
I think years ago, there was a member on the Cemetery Commission, Stix Rowland was his name, I don't know if some of you remember him. And he set this budget, they changed, I think, at that time, because he, he set this budget to keep the cemetery funds going as long as they could. So some of it was set in budgetary. You're going to run out of lots to sell, so you needed more put in.
Do we still have that ongoing analysis of, you know, build-out and some build-out?
I thought we had...
It was some of it in their report, yes.
Yeah, I think it told us how many lots they had left and how long it would take.
I don't think it included the expense side of projecting the care expenses on that, but it did project the income side, I believe.
I would disagree with the analysis. Respectfully, they, there were questions asked and answers weren't necessarily, as for, I don't think anybody had really done that kind of brush-up in a while, figuring out, maybe we should plan, you know. At least, at least that's what I gathered. I understood when I asked how many lots were left and how many lots they sell every year, that not to be typical. So if there are 20,000 lots and there are 2,000 sold per year, or whatever the, you know, whatever the, I don't know where I'm going with this, but I just, I don't think there's a firm understanding. I don't have a firm understanding of what operationally and financially we're looking at.
I'll just make a few comments as I'm liaison to the Cemetery Commission. They have on their to-do list that they need a financial plan, because there are also expenses to put in a road to build out the last section of the cemetery. So with this document on, on the Perpetual Care Fund and what percentage, they can certainly move forward and make decisions. The Cemetery Commission has already gathered information on the services and costs for area cemeteries, and they'll be reviewing that at their next meeting. So they do have it on, on their, their plan to do a financial plan, to know where they're going and what, what they need to get there. So they have that as their to-do.
Thank you.
And thank you for the information. I'm sure that they'll discuss it at their next meeting.
Thank you. K2 was actually not from me, but under the legal thing, this is the recommendation from the Planning Board regarding amendments for earth removal inquiry licensing. I've received it. I reviewed it, certainly at first glance. It's a great improvement over what we have. I know you have other people commented on it and want to comment and may have further Depending on how fast you want to move forward, about the quickest you could deal with it would be May 12th, allowing for the advertising. But if you want to move slower, we don't have to set that.
Okay. I'm just going to have a question, Tom, just very quickly. I'm, I'll play Mickey the Duntz because I'm very unfamiliar with what kind of expertise you would need and even what that would cost for us to, to get somebody in to, to do that type of review and how long it would take.
Right. We've never done it either. I'm not sure that, you know, the, the expertise is readily available. I would have to hire somebody, but I don't know what that would cost. But I think it is important to get that number right.
Could you do some research, Ken?
Trish, do you want to comment on how we might get maybe a little bit of help, maybe from you or somebody else?
It's Tricia Hilton, Tiverton Conservation Commissioner. As Tom said, we have never done this before, but in quarrying some of the other communities that have quarrying like ours, and this is specific because we have blasting for granite and rock. Many of the other quarries, including a lot of the ones on the list that you've seen, they're quarrying for sanding gravel, which is a whole different animal. Once you get into blasting and you're talking about people's, you know, drinking water supply being in bedrock fractures, it becomes more complicated. The cost or whether or not we could get some help, I don't know. I did hear today, I was given the name of a gentleman in New Hampshire who's apparently a world-renowned hydrogeologist, who happens to be a really nice guy, and a couple of town planners have said, you know, they've called him up, and he's been willing to talk and help people, you know, for nothing, that, you know, he'll sometimes have a phone conversation with somebody from a municipality. I've been pretty lucky usually if I call up and say I'm on the Conservation Commission from a small community that's budget-strapped. It's amazing how often people will go out of their way to, you know, to, to help you. So it might be at least worth a phone call to somebody like this, just to say, here's where we are, we don't have the expertise in the state, we don't really have a sister community that's in the same place, you know, is there any material you can point us towards? Is, are there, you know, could you point us to another community? And at least sort of try and see. I will say this, there is one other situation that's a little bit similar in West Greenwich. They have one quarry, and I saw today the multi-page legal agreement. Instead of handling it with their zoning, that particular quarry went to court with the town of West Greenwich, and after a long, long court trial, it finally was settled. And the guidelines for operation for that particular quarry, which does blast in an area where there is well water, rather than being in the zoning and the ordinance, it's all laid out in a, in a legal agreement between the quarry. And it is very, very extensive in terms of the requirements that they put on that quarry. So it might be worth just looking into this and seeing if we can find out just a little bit more and we can do it without spending a lot of money.
Thanks, Trish. Again, I, I feel that I don't know enough about this to, to want us to move quickly on this. I think there's been some questions raised that we need answers for. I would ask the town administrator to work with Mr. Rematowsky and Trish to see if we can get some information and, and maybe at least present some of that at either our next council meeting or the meeting after that before, because we have to go out to advertise and have the whole schedule. So I would at least rather have some basic information, even if it's just a cost estimate, if we had to bring in an expert before we, you know, move forward on an ordinance.
So we will not put it down for any particular date yet. And just so you know, I mean, our law firm does represent West Greenwich and has from the last 20 years, so that's not a problem getting the particular documents.
Yep.
But I will tell you, that was only after a very long, expensive litigation with that quarry in question over, you know, the basic debate. How much freedom were they going to have to operate and expand unlimited versus the town's regulation of it? And it was a very long suit before it finally got settled. So we just want to be careful that we don't get the same thing here.
No, I, I don't think we're looking for that. I think we're looking for an answer regarding the impact that the quarrying has on, on our water. And...
I'll also check to see. I don't know that we had any water, I don't know that we had any geohydrologist involved with the West Greenwich thing, per se, but they're also in a different aquifer system, actually much more of a surface water issue than we had.
They're a big river, right?
Yeah. So there were experts involved, but it was more of like aerial photographic experts and things like that were involved with that case. But I'll take a look and see.
Okay. What's that, Mr. Wojcicki?
I have a few questions about, because I actually emailed Nancy, kind of late in the process, about possibly getting more discussion of what we actually currently have in town and what current conditions some quarries are operating on now. Because I drive by Fish, I drive on Fish Road every morning, and I just happen to look left and I see one right there, and I do have some concerns of, not they, not, not particularly that one specifically, but in general. I mean, are these quarries following regulations for, because I look, I look there and I see a cliff. I can't see how deep it is from the road, but I also see a house that looks fairly close to that cliff, and I do have some concerns as, over time, is that wall going to deteriorate? Is that going to cause issues and cause well water? Does that person have a well there? I mean, is their well now draining into that pit? I don't know. And I guess it would be good to get some information on what, what licenses are currently out there, if any. I know we had a meeting about, roughly in November. We had some residents here, and I believe that Ms. mentioned then that there's only one operation that is currently licensed, that it was CNC so-and-so off of Crennel Road somewhere, as far as I can remember. And Nancy also mentioned that, I guess, Mr. Tights has all the files on the quarries currently. Is there a way to possibly get those so we can look at them or...
Actually, I had, I had the Douglas Quarry files, and a citizen requested them today, so I delivered them to Nancy at 7:00 tonight. Back to her.
So it's just those, or you have, because Nancy's email to me suggested...
Yeah, no, I, I have some of the ones from the others, from the clerk's office, yes. I have copies of that. But she's got it back there now.
Mr. Ruder, would you, why don't we play, pick a date certain to put it on the agenda? That way we can get provided with that information.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Our next one might be too soon, but...
But it sounds like it could be a lot of information, so if we put it two meetings from now, but if we could try to get the information sooner to give us more time to...
Right.
The information on the number of quarries and...
The licenses...
The current state.
Kind of the current state of the quarries in town.
The idea of this ordinance change and going to the Planning Board was to get this, but we'll give you a report on what it is. Probably not April 7th.
I wouldn't expect that. That's a lot for April 7ths.
Our next meeting is April 28th.
Yes.
So we have to...
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Ruder said, that we're also concerned with the existing state, that some of these quarries may have actually already broken into the groundwater, and we need to know, is that an issue? What should we be doing about that? How can we fix that if it is indeed a problem? And that's another reason why we need the expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, hopefully we have an update of who's operating, where they're operating, and then if, once we get a building official, we'll probably get better information regarding, you know, if there are what issues at, at this point in time.
And just reading their, their memo to us from the Planning Board, it seems that they're, they weren't unanimous in approving that, this ordinance to pass it on to us. So we might want to review their discussion and where they were coming from. might want to review their discussion and where they were coming from. Seems that at least one planning board member was not in favor of the setback requirements. I'd like to have more information around that.
Anything else on that? And just for the council, I have, I think you've been aware of previous, I have met with several, people from several of the different quarries as we're working to try to bring them into compliance even with our existing regulations before we go forward. Some of them have been more cooperative with the materials they've submitted than others.
Is there a problem with the current ordinance that they, are we not clear enough in our process?
Yes. Yeah, there are lots of problems with the current ordinance, including a claim that could be made that they don't even, the ordinance doesn't apply to them because it exempts the rock quarrying. They're not, they're not the operation that we say we're regulating because of that exclusionary language. There's other parts where it does apply, and my, my rule of thumb on this is saying, we need to apply it overall, and you do comply. And, but we certainly have that as a possibility. We also have a requirement that they spread oil to reduce dust, that they put oil down. So we have a lot of problems with the existing ones, but we're trying at least license-wise to get them all licensed and get the basic parameters from them of where are they now and where are they going, and what are they doing? Make sure that they post a bond for the reclamation. That's the key elements that we're trying to get at this point.
All right.
And that ties into, where they are now ties into the questions too about the groundwater as well.
Right. But if there is an issue with the current ordinance, then we want to make sure we fix it this time around, so that the process is clear and that what the licensing requirements are, are explicit, so that we don't have confusion. Thank you.
Just one more point, and it's in actually the rewrite that we're talking about, that this activity is actually forbidden by our zoning rules.
Right.
It's all existing non-conforming, and they should not have expanded. They should not have, you know, there's a lot of stuff there. We just got to keep that in mind, that our laws are telling us we really want to keep this activity restricted and eventually maybe get rid of it. Thank you.
Thanks. Andy?
Okay. Number three is just a short update on the staffing, legal staff with the, Sir Tights and Rich. One of our attorneys is leaving, Nancy Latender, who, she hasn't done a lot for Tiverton. She's been involved with some things. And I just want to update you on that. We're going to be using Gina Di Senzo a bit more, who you already know and familiar with. And we've also hired someone else, Nicholas Denise. He's a recent law school graduate working for us already while he waits his bar review results. So just wanted to bring you up to date on that.
Thank you.
K4 is litigation, kind of a double here, a twofer. Bourne Mill, the tax board of review denied their request, their appeal, and they have filed a complaint with the Superior Court, which is K4A. And K4B is our answer to that at the Superior Court. And I'm happy to have a couple of hour discussion on taxation of nonprofit housing and 8% of rental rates and all that, but you probably don't want to have that tonight. So I'm just providing you with the information in the meantime. Along with that also, they filed a complaint, violation of Open Meetings Act complaint. So K4C is the complaint. And K4D, which was not in your packet because it was due today and it was filed today with the Attorney General, is our response. Take one. There's one for you there. And that's our response, substantive response, as well as affidavits for myself and the tax assessor, and exhibits. By the way, the photographs that were attached, the Attorney General got the color photographs. You got the photocopies of the photocopies.
I actually know what it is, and I can't tell.
Right. They got, they got the nice, clean color photographs, but we didn't want to waste the money on it for the coverage.
Kohog Man is in there.
We did, yes.
Kohog Man is in there.
For the benefit, one of the allegations was that by holding the hearing back in the tax assessor's office, it was a closed meeting and the door might have been closed. So part of our defense was providing them with basically a photo tour showing easily coming in tax assessor over the doorway signs, open doorways, things like that. That was part of our defense.
Kohog Man's welcome.
Next item, K5, is of Laughlin. I know you've asked about that. We are in fact, as requested previously, we are on April 7th is the date of the hearing in Newport County Superior Court. And you have a copy, K5 is our motion for order to comply before the court for that hearing. The calendar's called at 9:30 if you want to attend.
And Andy, can you just clarify what again, the purpose of that particular meeting on the 7th of April is for?
We're asking for an order from the court that the offending structure be removed.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Tights?
That's all I have for open session.
Okay. Madam Clark?
I can't believe I put me last on the agenda.
You've got three minutes.
Okay.
All right, two and a half. Two.
It's just information on the Financial Town Referendum. Everyone should realize it's on May 20th. And the last day to register to vote at that Financial Town Referendum is April 20th. It's on a Sunday. The town hall clerk's office will be open that day. So please come in. If you are not a registered voter, you should come in and register.
Nancy, I'm sorry, the date on that again? April 20th?
Oh, is that Easter? Uh-oh. That's a bummer. Well, I won't be there, but I'm hoping more that a clerk will be there. We'll find someone that can. Anyway, the absentee ballot applications will be made available April 1st. So anyone that needs to get an absentee ballot, they can just stop by the clerk's office or ask to have one mailed to them. They'll also be on the website. There will be absentee voting again this year, three days prior to the Financial Town Referendum. That would be the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday prior to the referendum on May 20th. That is going to be a problem, I hate to tell you. But that would be the 15th, 16th, and 17th. Okay. And anybody can call the town clerk's office. We're going to begin to start to advertise these, so they'll start seeing it in the Sakonet Times. We are going to try to cut down a little bit because of expense on so much advertising, because people are more used to it now. We still will do everything, assuming there could be a runoff. March 31st, we had reserved for a workshop. It was going to be joint with the planning board since that is no longer, I have nothing scheduled for a workshop, so I guess we will not be holding that.
I'll be out of time.
And I just have one more. Sakonet River Bridge tolls. Senator Feilig had an article in, I think this was the Sakonet Times, and it suggested that people should be contacting the governor's office to put in support for no tolls on the bridge. So if you didn't catch that, it was in last week's Sakonet Times, I believe. That's it.
Thank you.
What about the Financial Town hearing?
Yeah, when is that?
Oh, the Financial Town hearing is scheduled for May 1st, which is a Thursday, and that will be at the Tiverton Middle School, not the high school. It's being occupied that night. So that will be at the Tiverton Middle School.
And time?
7:00 PM. And that will be advertised as well in Sakonet Times, as it gets closer.
What was the date?
And just in case the council is interested, their, their final date to submit either resolutions or any optional budget, if it went that way, would be April 13th.
Yep.
What's that? What day is that? Is that a Thursday?
It's a Thursday, but we have a meeting on the 7th, so.
Yeah, we'd have to make a decision by the 7th.
That's I think.
We might.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going to get ugly.
Mr. Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, 46, 5A2, Ray potential litigation, and 42, 16, 5A4, Ray-related investigation, Fire Department.
Second.
Motion and second, although in favor.
And continuing closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A2, Ray litigation, Larry Faulkner versus Tiverton.